Is Bill back there? Call to order of the Carver County Board of Commissioners, December 17th, 2019, regular session. Will you now join me as we pay our respects to the nation's flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our next item on the agenda is introduction of new employees. Do we have any new employees? Here we go.
Chair of Commissioners, I'm Lisa Songel, IT Manager overseeing Client Services. I am pleased to introduce today Kristi Hevela, who is our newest Client Services Representative, and I'll turn it over to her to introduce herself.
Welcome. Again, my name is Kristi Hevela, and I am a member of the Chaska community, and I appreciate what this county can do for us, and I appreciate working here as well. I previously owned my own business, and before that I was a Executive Director of a nonprofit builders' association. So I've gotten to learn a lot of things that I hope to bring forward here at the county.
Hey, we're welcome. We're glad you're here. We have a tradition of walking around this circle here and shaking everybody's hand. That's how we welcome you here.
Welcome.
Next item on our agenda is the public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Commissioners on an item not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Identify yourself and your address.
My name is Karen Johnson-Lightner, 1-573-5, Mayor Minnesota, 55360. I am a relevant public watchdog. Twenty years of cover-up for a John Linder broadcasting radio tower that happened to be put in Hollywood Township that never followed any of the rules, not the Minnesota rules or not the telecommunication rules. I drove to this meeting, and if I wasn't wearing my seatbelt, I could have gotten stopped, and I would have probably gotten a ticket, and they would have said, "We want you to put that seatbelt on for your safety." If I was speeding, the same thing would happen, and they say the safety of others and the safety of you. I would have gotten a ticket. I would have broke the law. And even in this room, you can't smoke anymore because of the fact it's the safety of the people. It took quite a while for the government and everyone to understand that, but it happened. So when it comes to health concerns, and I came up in December 13th, 1999, with all the concerns of this 100,000 watts that was in the wrong place, too short, too old, everything was a mess, I have been ignored. So the fight went on, and more and more people came, and what we did is we stopped the 100,000 watts after 10 years, and we kept 46 antennas. And if you see the screen again, I bring it again up to this podium. Because of the fact, Carver County Commissioners, you made a choice. You made a choice not to do best for the citizens. You sat there, and you denied what you had involvement. You denied the conflict of interest, the dealings with John Linder, $4,000 a year for 30 years. Yes, the citizens had to get it out of you, but it ended up happening, and I'm still here, and I'm going to continue being here, and this is going to go to Senator Amy Klobuchar. That's the next move that's going to happen here. But I have an article that was done October 21st, 2003, and that was about a vote that was going to have an investigation done about this whole conditional use permit and the tower given to John Linder, who in three months sold it for $20 million, profiting $17 million. And Carver County ended up, and it was Commissioner Ishii and Commissioner Degler voted no. They did not want the investigation. Commissioner Paul Newman and Commissioner Workman voted for an investigation, but one more commissioner, he got pulled in, and they said, "No, we'll do it ourselves." You can't investigate yourself when you did it wrong on your own. So the map here is there was 46 cellphone antennas, 100,000 watts, and emergency communication never used in the country or the world. And what ended up happening, it was supposed to be 10 antennas, but what we believe is it was going to be changed to 10 tenants. I'm telling you that what you did to us, it's been 20 years of my life, and I'm here. And I'm saying to you Commissioners, and you Chairman Randy Maluschnik, I put up a year with a lot of videotape, lots of good stuff for me. Do you have anything to say to me right now, before I leave this podium, instead of waiting until I leave the podium, and then you have comments? Do you have anything to say to me?
Quite a bit, but I'll wait till your five minutes are up.
Oh, so in other words, I can't come back to the podium and have anything to say.
Ma'am, this is not a debate society. You're here to give us information that might help us make any decisions in the future. So continue your comments, please.
Okay, if it's anything about the FCC, and if it's anything about towers, and it's anything about investigations, I want to make it perfectly clear for you. When you deny, and when you think the FCC is protecting us, it's actually the Food and Drug Administration that handles RF. So Mr. Chairman Maluschnik, we've got a year. So when I sit down there, I want these people here to understand. You better watch what you say.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good afternoon, Commissioner Maluschnik, the people of Carver County. My name is Sam Cook, 6044 Elliott Avenue North, Minneapolis. I'm really here to talk to the people of Carver County, because I'm not really clear. First, let me tell you who I am and why I'm here. I used to be Thomas Ross, President of the Can Do Group, who actually spent 10 years penetrating the Minnesota broadcast arena here in Minnesota, where we ultimately did business with John Linder and Carver County out here. And I have to tell you, the first time I saw that tower, I did take a double look and asked myself, "Why is the tower sitting on top of a community softball field?" Literally, the guardrails were 10 feet from the center field. And that looked weird to me, but after spending 10 years of trying to, of hearing, "No, we're not selling. No, we're not selling. No, we're not selling." Sold. You know, we were happy just to be able to have an opportunity to participate in the American broadcast industry. Little did we know that the Minnesota broadcaster chair, Jim Wykor, the former broker, brokered the deal, who brought us to John Linder, and insisted that we hire a gentleman by the name of Steve Woodbury, who you all, I'm sure, know, because these people literally lied to me. They never disclosed these issues that were going on since 1997. And this is 20 years for me, too. The month of December, we were in a 30-day confidential sale transaction of a $20 million deal that I spent, as an American entrepreneur, 10 years to penetrate. So like the President of the United States, I need a favor from you people out in Carver County. I need you to call your Commissioners. I've been coming here over the last 20 years, off and on, to try to bring resolve, so you guys can live peacefully out here and not have to continue to deal with this issue that turned, I know the people of Hollywood Township's lives upside down, and my life upside down. I guess I'll never understand how a transmitter from the Empire State Building ended up on top of a community center and a softball field and not out in the acres and acres of cornfield around it. Nevertheless, I wanted to stop in, introduce myself, and once again, just ask you a favor to call your Commissioners. We've submitted a resolution of resolve to the people of Hollywood Township and the Can Do Group who have suffered in this process. I don't know what you're hiding, don't really care. It's been 20 years. There's no legal remedy that can be done 20 years later, but like an impeachment, a political solution is always in three of your votes. I need three votes out of five to get a resolution passed, and I would hope that you would take a look at this, continue to take a look at this, and bring closure to this for yourself, ourselves, and the people of Carver County. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to the board? Seeing no one, we'll move on with our business of the day. So item number two is approval of the agenda and adoption of that agenda. Is there a motion to that effect?
Move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Commissioner Lynch on the motion. Commissioner Workman on the second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion prevails. We now have an agenda. Moving on, item number three, approval of the minutes for December 3rd, 2019, regular session, and December 5th, 2019, 2020 budget public hearing. Is there a motion to that effect?
With approval, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Degler on the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Really seconded by Commissioner Ishii. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion prevails. Moving on to item number four, which is community announcements. Commissioner Degler.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. As I was reviewing my packet again last night, I happened to have some Christmas music on in the background, and that kind of reminded me of all the concerts and cantatas that I've been fortunate enough to attend lately, and I'd urge all of you to attend a Christmas cantata concert. It really puts you in the mood. Nothing like music to put you in the mood for the real reason for this season. So on behalf of myself and I'm sure the rest of the board, want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Any other committee announcements, Commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ishii on the motions, or a second? Second by Commissioner Degler. Is there any further discussion on a consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The consent agenda is approved as presented. Moving on to the next item, which is number six, under our mission statement of connections, develop strong public partnerships and connect people to services. Item 6.1, a resolution recognizing flags in honor of Minnesota for Carver County veterans. And our county service officer is before us, Dan Tigwell. So, Mr. Tigwell, why don't you take it away?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, everybody. I'm here today to briefly honor, introduce Flags in Honor of Minnesota. They're an organization that's fairly new, maybe in the last five years. They came out of a different organization, which is the VFW Men's Auxiliary. They're an organization that makes it easy for people like me and other community helpers to help veterans in our community. Over the past several years that I've worked with Flags in Honor, and their great membership, they've offered to fix vehicles for veterans in need, provide rental assistance, and then even in one case, passing a veteran on to us that was suicidal and most likely saved that person's life. Partnerships with our office and our county is so important, and Flags in Honor of Minnesota is a huge example of that. If somebody is looking to get involved with veterans and veterans work, this is a great place to start. And I just, in talking to you, Mr. Chair, we figured that we needed to recognize them for the many great things they've accomplished thus far and that they will continue to do for our community. I will briefly turn it over to Scott Bradley, their president. Scott, if you want to say a couple of words, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks, Dan.
Welcome, Scott. Glad to see you here.
Thank you.
You bet.
So this was kind of kept under wraps here on me here, so I didn't really know what was, what we were doing here today. So I'm not usually speaking to large groups like this, but just wanted to fill you in a little bit. We've got many of our members over here. We came, as Dan said, from the Carver County VFW, or Chaska VFW, Men's Auxiliary. We've got ladies in our membership as well. We're all local here, and we service most everything with Dan for Carver County and Scott County veterans and their families. So lots of different projects that we, that we get offered to help with, anything from snow removal to lawn mowing, to paying for funerals, to medical bills, to whatever it might be. So Dan calls us when he's kind of at the end of the rope and doesn't have another place to go, and we try to come to the rescue every time, and I think so far we've...
Yeah, you do.
I think we've, I think we're 100% right now. So we're really proud of that, and got to thank all of our sponsors and folks that provide donations to us. About 97%, 98% of all of our donations go directly back to veterans and their families. We're all 100% volunteer. We've got a little insurance we've got to pay and some admin, stuff like that, but very, very minimal. So that's what we do, so.
Well, thank you, Scott. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Degler.
Scott, would you please have your group stand up, so we can see who you are?
This is just a portion that aren't at work, so.
Again, thank you very much.
I certainly can't do anything without these guys.
Yep, absolutely. We know, we know you're providing leadership there, Scott, but as you've always said, "It's not about me. It's about the people that are doing the work and the veterans." So we appreciate what you do, sir, very much. So Commissioners, you have a, a resolution in front of you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Move, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ishii on the motion. I think it's Commissioner Lynch's turn at the second. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. This motion prevails. Thank you very much. Thank you so much, gentlemen and ladies, too. So, Mr. Tigwell, thank you. Brett's in the office, or back there, too. Thank you, sir, our Assistant Service Officer. Our other one, tell me your name real quick. Chuck, that's right. I can't, I couldn't remember. Sorry about that. But our county service officers working for our veterans every day. Appreciate the good work they do. Moving on to our next item, number seven, under our, our mission statement is growth and manage the challenges and opportunities resulting from growth and development here in Carver County. 7.1 is William Mueller and Sons Incorporated, IUP, for aggregate mining operation. And Mr. Melkey, we have a presentation by you to start us off.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As you recall, this particular request was on the December 3rd County Board Agenda. It was tabled to this meeting in order for staff to put together findings of fact and in order with modifications to conditions that were discussed at the prior meeting. Bring that back for you to review and ultimately make a decision at today's meeting.
Jason, the document camera works if you need that?
That'll work.
PC doesn't work.
So what I've done here today, actually, first off, I'd like to, to make sure everybody's aware that after the county board meeting, county commissioners and staff received two letters. One, one dated December 10th from Mr. Roger Falkenstein. The second was, that was December 10th, 2019. The second was submitted this morning, December 17th, 2019, from Lori Cox. Both of those documents have been distributed to everybody. They are also on the back table for the public. This afternoon, I also received a concept screening plan from the applicant on behalf of Sunday Engineering, which takes into consideration some of Mr. Falkenstein's concerns or concept or ideas as far as what potentially could be done to help with screening for, for this gravel mining operation. The applicant and their representation did put together a concept for that. I will show that here in a little bit. But first off, I guess I would like to go through and, and just kind of explain, this particular request is an IUP. It is for the applicant, William Mueller and Sons. They currently operate from this, this site in Section 35 of Dahlgren Township. They've been doing that for the past 16 years under a conditional use permit. If, or upon issuance of the CUP, the conditional use permit activity would be terminated. They would follow the, the new permit and all conditions that have been attached. This proposed site, they are looking at purchasing, is 103 acres. Now, take into consideration, it's 103 acres, but the entire 103 acres is not be in mind because there are setback standards they have to comply with, as well as a gas line easement across the north, northeast corner of the property. So it's approximately, and I might be off, but 70-some acres is ultimately what they would be mining when you take into consideration the 20 acres that's already been mined. What they're looking at accomplishing with this is expand upon the existing footprint that's already been permitted. That would include some phasing and reclamation plans, revision of hours of operation, the ability for processing and recycling as permitted activities, as well as removing limitations on production levels. This request, as do all requests, and as part of the conditions, do need to conform with the CCWMO, their stormwater, erosion sediment control guidelines, as well as the Carver County Public Works in utilizing and upgrading the access off of County Road 40. Again, pursuant to the, to the board's direction on December 3rd, an order for approval was attached for your consideration. There was also the same order that was marked up in kind of a legislative format to kind of show, based on what the Planning Commission resolution looked like, and what was discussed at the last county board meeting, the changes that have been made, and more specifically to the conditions based on the modifications the applicant was, was willing to go along with. So I guess at this point, I would like to use the overhead and go through these particular, the conditions of the permit. There has been new information and language that I think needs to be included as, as part of general requirements number two. So basically, the language that was added based on our last county board meeting was to include a change in ownership and/or exhaustion of the aggregate mining, including acceptance of the final reclamation and release of the financial security. And so if it's exhausted, in order to terminate, they'd have to complete their restoration, and then therefore the financial security would be released. The applicant has indicated today that they are willing to put an actual date in there, and that I guess we, we need to include as part of the, the order today. I do have some sketched-out language that I quickly put together here, and I guess it would identify that the permit shall terminate, and they're looking at including a 30-year termination, or 30 years and then termination. So a permit shall terminate January 1 of 2050, and then lead into the other existing language that's in place, and/or shall change in ownership and the exhaustion of the aggregate mining, something along those lines. The second was number five. Language was removed to make it, because the county public works as the road authority, it was specific that they were going to do a bypass lane and, and the acceleration lane. They're still looking at doing the improvements, but in order to let public works do their review and make the determination as to what's going to be required, I felt removing that language, they still need to follow the county public works guidelines and design standards, and it will be an acceleration lane and potentially a turn lane, left turn lane, instead of a bypass lane. So I felt changing that, making it more streamlined and letting them, the road authority, manage what's required was the most appropriate means here.
Mr. Melkey. And then, because I had the question last night from a person who lived out in Mount Carmel Road, so who pays for that acceleration lane and the turn lane?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that, all of that work is, the design and construction is done by the applicant, William Mueller and Sons.
Okay.
That information will be submitted to County Public Works for their review and approval, as well as it'll be reviewed and signed off by the CCWMO for stormwater erosion sediment control guidelines.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Melkey.
Number six on here, it was somewhat general, and to identify what the CCWMO rules and regulations, what they're reviewing, we included language. Again, it was pretty general that grading and erosion sediment control plan are prepared, and I wanted to make it a little more detailed, that that includes grading, vegetation and maintenance, and a landscaping plan, in addition to the language that was already there, erosion sediment control plan and stormwater management plan. Again, all of that being reviewed and approved. That would also include the, the screening berm plan that will have vegetations establishment guidelines, as well as planting guidelines.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Let's clarify, Jason, the, the first change that you proposed was not, was not part of the final order that you have in the packet, but it looks like these other changes are.
Correct.
So is, is it correct that you're, you're only going to add that one change, the 30-year requirement? You proposing to only add that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Hemsey, we are looking to include that to the existing language that's there.
Yes. Oh, just to make sure we're on the same page, because we've got three things going on here. So basically, he's recommending the final version in your packet plus the 30, the 30-year language.
So will that be an additional item then at the bottom, I'm assuming, just for, just for informational purposes?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think if, if it can be incorporated into that finding, or if it needs to be handled as a separate finding, up to the board.
So provided that this is approved, I could just direct you to do that then, as a chairman, right?
Correct.
All right, we'll do that then. Go ahead.
Number two should not have strike-through on the number itself. It's just basically taking language that was in the Planning Commission resolution and modifying that based on the discussion that took place at the county board meeting. 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Saturdays, and mining and processing shall not occur on Sundays or federally observed holidays unless it's for emergency purposes. The strike-through, again, the top strike-through was just to clean it up, and the bottom strike-through language was to incorporate that into the number three you see and create a separate finding as far as the construction equipment located on the site. Separating it out, I feel, made more sense than incorporating it with the hours of operation. Number six is a new finding, which was based on the applicant proposing limited days of crushing and of watering, the washing activity. So I incorporated both of those into one, one condition. The permit shall be limited to 100 days of crushing and 100 days of washing annually. And then the rest of that, basically, is that they need to notify the county prior to crushing activity and when crushing is, is, has been completed. And then the days of operation, they also need to document and then submit that to us to make sure that the numbers that they're giving us or the timeframes are corresponding with what they were doing out on the site. The maximum height of the crushed material stockpiled shall be maintained at the elevation below the surrounding grade or at the top of the berm elevation. If you recall, I explained that all mining activity takes place at the floor of the, of the current mining operation and will continue on. So any of their stockpiling that they have would be maintained at the elevation, so it would be no higher than the surrounding elevation or a berm in a specific location. But either way, it is, it is screened or being held below any sort of visible means, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, just for a little bit, Jason, a little question on this. The 100 days, they could run concurrently, correct? Washing and crushing?
Mr. Melkey.
Yeah. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Degler, I think that'd be accurate. If they had the opportunity to do it in a two-week timeframe, they would, and then they would stop, and then they still have additional days.
Yep.
If they wanted to try and do a larger portion of crushing activity at one time, they'd have the opportunity to do it, but it would be capped at the 100 hours.
Well, I, thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Degler. Mr. Melkey.
Number eight was just a change to not address adjacent property owners. Number eight is in regards to Northern Natural Gas specifically. So taking out adjacent property owners and cleaning that up, so it's specific to NNG, and then the conditions that they feel the applicant needs to follow based on their utility easement through the property, making sure that they're being made aware of what's taking place, and so on and so forth, and getting the appropriate approvals if needed. place and so on and so forth, and getting the appropriate approvals if needed to cross that 100-foot wide easement area. Number 10 was just, again, a correction. We had indicated that they obviously are required to, to meet all standards. That includes PCA, Department of Natural Resources, and/or any other state or federal approval. I changed that to regulations. Part of the regulations might not necessarily be an approval process, it just might be boilerplate language. Number 11, taking the word "stockpiles" out and changing that to perimeter berms that need to, and restored areas must be seeded and mulch within 72 hours. The reason I took stockpiling out is if they have stockpile in the mining area that they're actively utilizing, they shouldn't be required to do some sort of seeding on that for a vegetative cover. It's all confined, and it, it will move in a shorter period of time. We also included language that, that seeding and disc mulching within 72 hours of final grade, except those areas return to ag production. That's ultimately the end, end result, is that they will, they will be converting this back to ag production land. The whole point of doing the restoration and the stormwater guidelines require them to put so much topsoil back in place to support of it, a good vegetative cover.
Mr. Ishi has a question.
And just going back to the 72 hours of final grading, or within 72 hours of final grading, if they prepare seed and mulch, or if they're about to, but then it rains for 72 hours, are they in violation of their permit?
Mr. Milkie.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ishi, I don't believe they would. I think that's all part of working with the Planning and Water Department and the Soil and Water Department or office that does a lot of our onsite monitoring for sites. They would be able to, if we've got, you know, five days of rain, be able to accomplish what they need to once it dries out. So I, I feel that working with staff, they would be allowed to exceed that if needed.
Oh, Mr. Ishi?
Yeah, after, after a year like this, if you were in a farming business or excavating or wherever, whatever it was, 72 hours comes and goes pretty quickly when it's raining pretty steady.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Milkie. You continue.
Mr. Chairman, on this same topic.
Mr. Degler.
Except, final, back to 72 hours, except for those areas, return to agricultural production. Am I led to believe that part of this, maybe 25, 30 acres, will be back in agricultural production before the rest of it's even mined?
Mr. Milkie.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Degler, that is in fact true. They currently have an area that's been restored, and there's a vegetative crop, alfalfa, on it right now. So as the mining activity moves on, and they have their 35-acre area, once it's restored, they have the opportunity to put it into ag production. They choose not to and just want to put it into something else that has a vegetative cover, they certainly can do so.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, Mr., or Commissioner Degler. Mr. Milkie, continue.
Number 12, we, the, the second part of that condition, we added a berming plan utilized for screening shall include appropriate restoration phasing plan, as well as, and here we get into what's all required as part of the review. It's going to be the grading, vegetation with maintenance, and the landscaping plan. And also, if you recall, the phase four of the project in the north, northeast corner of the property, since it's such a smaller area, putting more of a limitation on how long it would take for them to mine it and restore it, and get in and get out. So they were in favor of, of having a three-year, three-year timeframe that would allow them to mine and reclaim the flight, phase four area, and temporary berms that are recreated as part of the screening be removed as part of the final reclamation. So there will be a temporary berm, possibly, or maybe a permanent berm that can help screen that particular area. But it does have a shorter time period to get in and get out of that final phase based on the applicant's application. Number 14 is in regards to noise pollution, and that they are required to meet state rule, not statute, state rules, chapter 7030, and they will be incorporating the, the broadband backup alarms to be installed on all of, all of the Mueller's equipment in the site, as well as establishing more of a, a pattern, trucks coming in, dumping, going into the pit, the floor of the pit, loading up or just exiting back out, and having more of a flow that can help eliminate some of the tracking on the county road as well. That plan, that concept will be submitted as part of the, the CCWMO review. They have some other ideas, maybe of what can be incorporated onsite that can help with that tracking, but that's what they'll be looking at. But that, that's basically what that second portion of the, the pattern for loading to reduce backup movements also goes hand in hand with keeping a consistent flow pattern. It also includes processing equipment and operate, is operated within 700 feet of a residence, that noise testing shall be conducted by the permittee and to verify compliance with the state noise standards and the results submitted to our office, so we have, have that information documented. As you can see on the map, again, the homes on the easterly portion of the property identify the 500-foot setback that's required, but they're identifying that if they're within 700 feet of a residence, that they will do the, the testing and submit the results to the county for documentation purposes. Under the restoration requirements, just the only thing that was added was stabilization and have turf, establish turf, and/or, again, return to ag production. So not that everyone's led to believe that the entire site's going to have this permanent vegetative cover. It will be put back potentially into ag production in some areas. I'm assuming the outer edges of the site that can't be farmed will be converted back with grasses and vegetation will be established, but the majority of the site would ultimately remain in ag production once, once it's mined out. And with that, the, again, as I've been putting up here, here's the concept plan that was submitted by, on behalf of the applicant from Sunday Engineering, to kind of help, give everybody a visual as far as what they proposed to see happen with their screening. They do, do identify their screening, excuse me, in the northeast corner of the property, four to 14 feet temporary berm as part of the phase four guidelines. They do have screening established by, by creating a berm along County Road 40 and outside of the pipeline easement. That's one thing that I did speak with Northern Natural Gas, and they will not allow plantings within that easement area, and they would prefer to have all berming outside of their easement area. If they do need to cross that easement on a regular basis, they will have to go through a permitting process with Northern Natural Gas for the traffic crossing that 100-foot wide easement. So this, this ultimately reflects staying out of that easement area altogether. Last plan, they identified a small berm, one to four feet in height, more or less a stormwater diversion that would be kept in place for the duration of the project. And then on the easterly side, to be respectful of, well, the east side and the northeast, to be respectful of the neighbors, knowing that they have the 500-foot setback, they would ultimately create and establish their berm to follow that, that area. And then they would also increase the berm height 10 feet, 14 feet, to give it a little more appeal with the plantings. They include some dogwoods or, or plants, the shrubs that are going to grow fast. I thought the idea would have been to incorporate some evergreens in this area, but a six-foot evergreen, and you transplant that, the first year or two, you're really not going to get any growth out of it to begin with. And if the soils are such where there, it's a little lighter soil, they might not necessarily do as well either. So with the assistance of, of some sort of landscape architect and our soil and water staff, I think they can come up with a plan that, that'll still accomplish what it needs And with that, Mr. Chair, I guess, again, we're, based on the county board's direction, we put together the findings of fact for approval, and at this time, I guess, we're looking for a motion to adopt the findings of fact and issue order, PZ 2019-0043, for the issuance of the interim use permit, including the language about the, the 30-year termination.
Thank you, Mr. Milkie. Board members, questions for Mr. Milkie, Mr. Ishi?
Just a quick one, if I could. You talked about the 2050 termination, and the three-year mining of phase four is in there as well, correct?
Correct.
Very good.
Follow-up question? No.
For a motion?
Uh, not yet. I actually have some other things to take care of. Other members, questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Milkie. Mr. Harris, do you have anything to add to the staff report as the applicant?
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. Very good. Our, traditionally, we allow, again, the public hearing was, was with the Planning Commission, was actually the hearing regarding this item. It's been a tradition of this board and the essence of transparency to hear from the folks that may object or have comments regarding this issue. We limit that to five minutes, as we did last week or last time we met, and we ask that you only talk about things that, you know, no repeating information, we already have that. If you have new or important information, please include that in your comments, and we ask you to only speak one time. So with that, I'll ask you to come to the podium. Anybody that want to speak on this issue, and that you identify yourself and your address. So do we have someone which is to speak to this issue?
Of course, it's me again.
Roger, we know you, we like having you here.
Thank you. My name's Roger Falkenstein. I'm at 15255 Halsey Avenue, just on the eastern border of this mine property. Okay. What I'm, what I want to say is, I just want to remind everybody here, the public as well as the board, that I'm, I've talked about a number of concerns we have. It started out with a dozen, we keep kind of narrowing it down. And it goes without saying, we're concerned about the, the noise. You know, we're used to being outside, having some peace and quiet. We didn't move into this property 25 years ago, knowing that we're going to have now something like a crusher going on 100 days. Now, think about this for a minute. When you talk about crushing, limiting it to 100 days, if you can do that five days a week, do the math, you're talking about 20 weeks. So that basically is May, June, July, August, September. That's when we want to be outside, and that's what we're going to hear. And it's 125 decibels, I'm telling you, that's what they all say, and, and that's the kind of noise we're going to have to hear. So, and then on top of that, we're going from 7,000 trips per day of trucks with a projected capacity, we're going to 50,000. So it's going to be a significantly worse scenario than we're, what we're seeing there today. So it's, our quality of life and our environment is going to be definitely impacted. And for that reason, I want to just reiterate what I think is really an important factor, and that is the statute 152082, it says the activity will, will have no substantial adverse effect on surrounding property, or that the impact will be alleviated through conditions of the permit. We still do not feel like the compromises that have been made really meet that. So the, the challenge it really is, in addition to quality of life, what it really ultimately then does is it impacts our, our, our property values. If you actually just look at four properties that surround us, there's, there's four property owners, Jurissons, ourselves, and the, the Holstons, and the Schlegel-Melks, it represents 400 acres. And that's just property bordering this. If you look at what, what developers are paying for land to develop nowadays at $100,000, and if you go by the studies that were done for Upjohn, which, which I communicated before, properties within a third of a mile will be impacted by a 30% loss in value. So basically, do the math, 40 million now means that's a, that's a $12 million hit. And it's not just something we think about long-term, we have an immediate impact. And Ted Holston, he'll talk for a minute, if he's still here, he's trying to sell a lot now, which is basically going to be unsellable, because it's right next to this, to this mine. And we were hoping to, to exercise the opportunity with the, our township where we could have high amenity lots. That is not going to be an option anymore. So we take a direct, immediate hit in property values. So I don't know if there's any way around it, because, you know, it looks like this is going to be approved, but I want to just set the record straight. One of the things that, that the applicant did is they, they gave us an example of, hey, here's some gravel pits that were down in the southeast metro that says, hey, look at, there's development around it. But I want to make it clear, one of those in Apple Valley was established in 1931. Okay? So, and also another one that was, that was referred to, that was, that the applicant said was in Lakeville, it really wasn't, it was in Empire Township, that was established in the 40s. So those, to, to compare those to what this is, is not a fair comparison. That's more like looking at the Carver Mine, it's been there for a long time, and eventually, the city grows around it, yes, but it also doesn't address the fact that the property values are impacted. So that directly impacts us significantly. So my concern is, is if we put a, a termination date, which is, we studied 15 counties around the metro area, every one of the counties and metro areas now have a, have a termination date in their IUPs. And if you actually look at the township called Empire Township down in the southeast metro, in, they have more gravel pits than any other township in the whole metro area. They have over 3,000 acres of gravel pits. Their IUP terms are either five or 10 years. That is the intervals that they approve, because they want the control to maintain, to be maintained not by the applicants and by the mining company, but by the governing unit. And that's the intent behind it. So I, I, I appreciate the fact that now you've, you're understanding and you're actually proposing a time limit, but 30 years, it's too long. It just doesn't fit what we believe is, is, is appropriate. So that, that's my statement there. The only thing I want to wrap up with, too, is that when you look at this berm plan, the, the way I propose an alternative is moving the berm back and making it a straight line and compromising our setback from our home. Part of the reason for that is because having a tall berm like that right next to the roadway, that road will be blocked in Minnesota winters, because that wind comes across, west winds, and the township's going to be spending thousands every year with dozers clearing that snow. So my suggestion of moving it back was, was really to benefit the neighborhood as well as the road maintenance. And I really think you need to run this by Dogren Township or San Francisco Township, because that's going to be a factor, and I just think you really need to consider that when you're taking this berm design.
Okay, thank you, Roger. I believe you have an attorney here, is that correct?
Yeah, we do.
Did he want to, I believe he wanted to speak? Why don't, why don't we have him come up now, if that's okay? Mr. Counselor. Counselor. Please identify yourself for the record, and we give you attorneys just a little bit more than five minutes, because we know you're charged by the hour.
I appreciate that, Chairman Lucknick and Commissioners. I will try not to use more than five minutes.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
You'll, you, you heard from Roger Falkenstein. Well, let me start by introducing myself. I'm David Zoll with Lockridge Grindel Nowon, and representing Roger Falkenstein and other neighbors in connection with, with this permit, and, and questions that have come up regarding, in large part, the, the requirement for a, a specific termination date for the IUP. You heard from Roger, and you will hear from others about the specific potential impacts that they will experience on their properties related to this. I'm not going to repeat that. I want to focus on the requirement for a termination date. And this comes specifically from the Carver County Code, which provides that with an IUP, the county will establish a specific date or event that will terminate the use on the property, in this case, the, the use of it as a gravel mine. It's, I think, clear what the importance of that is for the neighboring property owners to have that specific date when termination will occur. It doesn't mitigate the adverse impacts that they're going to experience. The, the property values will be depressed, they're going to hear the noise, it will affect their use and enjoyment of the property. But what a, a date certain does is it provides them with an assurance that the impacts will in fact be temporary. And for- And for folks that want to be able to develop their property, they have a timeline that they can anticipate for when that development can occur. The importance to the county, as the governing, governing body, is similar. And for context, let's look at the county zoning code and the comprehensive plan and how that relates to this particular parcel. The proposed project is located within the Transition Overlay District for Carver County. Quite simply, what this means is that consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, this land is anticipated for urban development within roughly the next two decades. So we're talking about 20 years. Within 20 years from now, it's anticipated that development, like Mr. Falkenstein and others have discussed, is likely to occur. Including a specific termination date assures that this interim use, which is inconsistent with residential development, will not impede the development that is anticipated in the comprehensive plan. Setting a, a date certain retains for the county the ability to control and plan its future development in these areas. I recognize and appreciate that, that applicant is willing to agree to a specific timeline. But that's only part of the question, whether there's a timeline. The, the real issue here now is what is the appropriate timeframe? To date, the, the time, the periods for the, the mine that have been discussed have always been 10 to 20 years. That's what we've heard, and all indications are that the, the mining could be completed within that 20-year timeframe. That's consistent, by the way, with the timeline for development contemplated in the comprehensive plan. Now, I recognize that there's maybe some uncertainty in how long it will take to complete mining the aggregate. And certainly, the neighbors understand uncertainty. That's why they're here. That's why I'm here, is because they face significant uncertainty right now with how long this use would continue and if and when they would be able to develop their properties, or how long they have to tolerate this inconsistent use, the noise that they'll experience from the operating gravel mine. And while there's uncertainty regarding the, the aggregate market, you know, how long it will take to extract the resources, depending upon how many people are buying it, we recognize that. We recognize that there's that uncertainty, and, and my assumption is, that's why, although we have heard 10 to 20 years, why the applicant is suggesting a 30-year term at this point in time, is they want to control for that uncertainty. But my point, my final point is going to be this. The decision whether to allow the mine to operate until 2049, 30 years from now, even though the surrounding areas are planned for development by 2039, is not a decision you need to, or I would suggest even should make today. Instead, the county could approve a shorter timeframe, 20 years, for example, and if development's delayed, if the, the market for aggregate tanks and there's a need to extend it, the decision of whether that's appropriate, whether the applicant needs more time to complete mining, whether that would be consistent with the surrounding development and the timeframe, can be made at a later date in time. 20 years is a long time. We don't know what the circumstances are going to look like in, in 2039. And making a decision now that assumes that this plant could operate, the, the mine could operate through that entire timeframe, just isn't appropriate. So with that context, we, the, Mr. Falkenstein and the surrounding neighbors would suggest, consistent with Mr. Falkenstein's December 20, or excuse me, December 10, letter to the Commissioners, that you adopt a shorter timeframe, a 20-year period, consistent with the applications, recognizing that that's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it's consistent with the timelines that have expressed by the applicant for its project.
Thank you, Counselor. Questions for the Counselor? Okay. All right, other folks that would like to speak on this item? And we're asking for new information, please? Try to limit it to that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you. I want to thank you.
Should identify yourself for the record.
Yes, certainly. I am Adam Falkenstein. I am located at the property, address 15085 Halsey Avenue, adjacent to the proposed mining area. Again, I want to thank you, Board of Commissioners, once again, for allowing us to speak, and I ask that you adhere the concerns and citizens of this community. I would like to start by stating the fact that Mueller &amp; Sons has been a part of this community for a long time, as they have said, four generations. It's a long time for any business in this age. The applicant has stated numerous times that they are trying to be neighborly in this process, and I would say that it has been a far cry from it. Merriam-Webster states that "a neighbor is to live or to be located as a neighbor or to associate in a neighborly way." And neighborly is of relating to or characteristic of congenial, congenial neighbors, or especially friendly. If we look at the word congenial, it means pleasant because of personality, quality, or interests that are similar to one's own. Interesting? I think it's clear at this point in time that our interests are not aligned, which, to me, says that there's something in this process that is not working, and I would like to address that. In my line of work, when we look at, when we look at quality or we look at a problem, we blame systems and not people. So I would like to address that. I would like to take a step back and recall the timeline of events that have, that have undergone. Based on the fact that is already in the, in the public record, I can't go any further back than, than August 6th, but I know that there has been work ongoing far earlier than the August 6th timeframe. But on August 6th, the, the, the board authorized a land management senior planner to sign and distribute the EAW for a 30-day comment period. The 30-day comment period for the EAW began on August 19th and ended on September 18th. It was also published in the EQB Monitor, which is part of the Department of Natural Resources. A press release announcing the availability of the EAW for public review and comment, including a description of the project, was sent to the Chaska Herald on August 22nd. Four governmental bodies responded during the public comment period and two just after the period closed, which was, all six responses were received between September 5th and September 20th. Not a single resident responded. I would ask you why? Carver County Board authorized a negative declaration on the EAW for this permit on October 8th, and a written notice was sent to residents within a quarter mile of the proposed mine dated November 5th, which most people did not see right away. On Wednesday, November 6th, Roger called Jason Milkie to ask about the permit, to which he said that the IUP will be published with the agenda for, for the Carver County Land Management Board on November 13th. So it wasn't until November 13th that we were able to first view the, the permit itself. On Thursday, the 14th, was our first contact with neighbors and the applicant, and that evening, a group of neighbors gathered to discuss the impact of the proposed mine expansion. Five days later, the land management board met to hear the proposal and public comment on the matter. There were so many concerned neighbors that there was not even standing room for all the concerned neighbors, and over 100 signatures on a petition against the proposal, all in five days. So again, I ask, why was there no public response to the, to the posting in the Chaska Herald on August 22nd, 2019? Within five minutes of discussion, a unanimous approval of the permit was completed. So I ask, do you think if there had been conversations with neighbors engaged in the process beforehand, that there would have been hundreds, hundreds of people wanting to comment? Why would this process wait until the 11th hour to engage the neighborhood? Let's take a look at Benton County. It's just north of the Minneapolis-St. Paul metropolitan area. For their permitting process, they say, they strongly encourage an open and early dialogue with the community. Here's the quote directly from the permit application. "Benton County strongly recommends that you discuss your proposal with the adjacent property owners and the township supervisors before a formal application is made. Any conflicts you can resolve ahead of time will make it clear, will make it easier and faster for the county to process your application." Also, if we look at a publication by the League of Minnesota Cities Information Memo, "Zoning Guide for Cities," which is published on September 17th of this year, 2019, page 35, under the Zoning Administration section, Part C, Standards for Reviewing Applications, Subpart 2A, Neighborhood Opposition, says, "Certain zoning or app, certain zoning or zoning applications may generate vocal public opposition." What do you think this is?
Well, you're at over five minutes now.
Okay.
So please try to wrap it up, Adam.
I, I will wrap up by.
Thank you, sir.
Two paragraphs.
Thank you, sir.
The second bullet in this paragraph says, "Address potential issues proactively by involving residents early in the planning and zoning process." Now, I ask, what would the process have looked like if this guidance had been followed? Do you think you would have had hours of public testimony, delayed county decisions, or people, dare I say, neighbors who would have, who would care to coexist with a longstanding business of Carver County now at odds? I would venture that this process would have had looked strikingly different, and we have, we may have been able to come to some agreements to proceed with this permit as neighbors in a more agreeable way that doesn't significantly impact the community in a negative manner. So I urge you to consider adding language to this permit process so that this, this can be addressed and the impact minimized going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Other folks like to speak to this? Please remember, five minutes, and new information, please.
Excuse me. John West, 14975 Halsey Avenue.
Welcome, John.
I have some prepared remarks. I'm not much of a public speaker, so my apologies for that. Thank you again for letting us voice our concerns publicly, and, and as Adam said, I, I also urge you to take to heart what we have to say before you make your decision today. I want to just take a quick poll. Who here would choose to pay top dollar to live 500 feet from a gravel pit?
Well, we don't respond, it's not a debate, as I understand. It's a rhetorical question.
It is.
Yes, thank you.
Especially now that we have 30 years ahead of us. I know my wife and I would not have paid top dollar to raise our kids there. Adam and Jill would not have paid top dollar to raise their kids there. Nobody would pay top dollar to do that. And why wouldn't we make those decisions? It's for the same reason nobody in this room is going to raise their hand, whether it's rhetorical or not. At our last meeting, Jason showed a picture of a gravel pit where neighborhoods had built up around it, as if this was somehow proof that we are not affected. But there's no mention whatsoever of what the people paid for those houses, because if that was actually addressed, it would be obvious that people are buying those homes for less than what they could get elsewhere because they understand that the decrease in their quality of life warrants an equivalent balance on the value of their home. I'm sure you've all heard the phrase that "we have two seasons in Minnesota, winter and construction season." Well, construction season is the season that Minnesotans yearn to be outside and enjoy the fresh summer air, knowing full well that we need to enjoy every minute of it before the snow falls again. What my family and my neighbors now have to look forward to every summer is truly construction season, as summer projects ramp up and aggregate demand in the season. What we have to look forward to is increased dump truck, truck traffic. Some of our neighbors in the surrounding area already use Halsey Avenue to avoid this traffic, and regardless of the addition of this acceleration lane, imagine how much more traffic will shift to our little county gravel road to avoid these rush hour backups. My family's peaceful morning walks, the, the day my wife, both days that my wife went into labor, we use that road to walk it off. I'm sure you've, most or all of you have been there. We can no longer do that. The safety of our road will be severely compromised. Our quality of life will diminish. With the increased dump truck traffic will come increased noise from the backup alarms, whether they be white noise or otherwise, dump doors banging as they dump their fill, and the noise from digging through rock and gravel 500 feet from our homes. My home is currently 1,500 feet or so from the current gravel pit, and I can hear this noise inside my house today. I can feel the vibrations during my morning shower as the truck bed vibrators engage, and that is going to come not only closer, but the frequency will increase. Our quality of life will diminish. What we have to look forward to is 100 days of 125-decibel crushing machine disrupting our family cookouts. There's no guarantee that the entirety of these 100 days won't affect all of our warm, precious months. And every single day my children want to play outside, we will need to stay vigilant the dust from the mine is not blowing all over our property and directly into their vulnerable and developing lungs. Is it not obvious yet that our quality of life will diminish? What we have to look forward to is a giant unsightly earthen berm as a constant reminder that we lost. The Lundquists make money, the Mullers make money, the county makes money, and the neighbors lose. Plain and simple. Why did we lose? Because Carver County does not recognize the hardship that actions like this impose on the quality of life of its citizens. Other counties and even townships in our state are recognizing these hardships, so why aren't we? San Francisco Township, directly next to Dogren Township, recognized the dramatic effect that actions like this in the past have had on its citizens and now require a 1,000-foot setback to better ensure that established residences are less affected. Carlton County details the following. "Is the proposed use injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted or substantially diminish and impair property values within the immediate vicinity?" Let me say that again. "Is the proposed use injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted?"
15 seconds, John.
The quality of life will diminish. In the Land Use Committee hearing in November, Commissioner Ishi stated that he didn't know whether it was a blessing or a curse that Carver County is the fastest-growing county in the state. Why can't it just be a blessing? Do we really need to allow any and all forms of expansion in our county without truly understanding, recognizing, and accounting for the hardships that the expansion imposed, imposes on the quality of life of our citizens? I urge you all to listen to our reasonable requests. Put yourselves in our position and act accordingly for our future and the future of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Other folks to speak on this issue? CNN, we'll move on. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering if the applicant had some response?
Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I will not trample over ground that this board has heard of in the past, but I do want to address the timing and the ultimate length of the permit, as that is something that was not in the prior considerations. First of all, I think it's important for the board, it's, it's the county's code, but what does the county's code say? That if applicable, and applicable is a very nebulous in this case, the county needs to make the following findings. The date or the event which will cause a termination. The draft of the permit that you had in front of you that you discussed two weeks ago had three events which would have terminated the permit. A change in the ownership of the property, exhaustion of the aggregate mining, and final reclamation of the property. In response to neighbor concerns, Mueller's is willing to put an overall, aggregate's probably a play on words, 30-year cap on when mining will terminate. The applicant's been very straightforward from the beginning in this. The initial application states, and your draft permit early makes a finding, that the mining may take 15 to 20 years or more. Mueller's doesn't know what the timing is. This is a limited and precious resource. It, it needs to be mined. As soon as it's mined, it's going to be terminated. They're willing to agree to a 30-year cap. I don't think they have to do it because the existing draft permit already had three events which would have led to a termination and satisfied your code. I think it's, I think it's important for the board to realize that. The other issue is, I think the board has heard, has heard everything on it, and I don't want to take your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Questions for Mr. Harris? All right, board members.
Ready for a motion?
Ready, Mr. Ishi? If you want to make a motion, you can make one.
I move to adopt the findings of fact, issue order number PZ 2019-0043.
Mr. Ishi, on the motion, is there a second?
I would second.
The motion is duly seconded by Commissioner Lynch. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hamzey.
Clarify that motion in.
Clarify that motion includes the 30-year language.
Mr., I would direct that as the, yeah, you can, that's a friendly amendment?
The 30-year language.
That's, we had discussed, correct.
It's the 30, and the chair would direct that, too, so. All right, uh, further discussion? Anything more, Mr. Hemsey?
Thank you.
Further discussion, board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Degler.
I feel compelled to say a few words, and maybe I shouldn't. Uh, I think the neighbors have, have eloquently expressed their concerns, and I agree wholeheartedly with them. I mean, I am, I'm living in an area myself that has been impacted by development. Uh, who knows what's the best development? I remember a number of years ago, all my neighbors wanted office industrial properties. Whoops, the economy changed. Then they all, all wanted residential. Would, be careful, who know, who makes that decision? Obviously, it's not the landowners that makes that decision. The landowners have to work with the, the authorities, the governing authorities. In my case, it happens to be the cities. Uh, and the cities make the decision, okay, you're going to be zoned this way, yours is going to be zoned that way. Uh, you, you want to say there's some winners and some losers? It all depends upon the economy at that stage of the game when people decide to, uh, change the use of their land. Um, we're all, we're used to what we see out our windows every day. Uh, that doesn't mean it's going to stay that way forever. Um, like I say, I, I really understand where you're coming from. The county and the governing authorities, hopefully, and most of the time, uh, make the decision that they feel is best and/or it's legal. I mean, this is, um, we're saying that the owners of the property, the Lundquist's, shouldn't make, shouldn't have the right to sell their property, and the highest and best use for them happens to be a gravel pit. It's hard, you know, are we picking winners and losers? No, I think we're sitting here trying to make a decision that is, uh, legal and hopefully benefits the whole county. Uh, it's going to be a, a major change, no, no doubt about it. The fear of the unknown sometimes is worse than what actually takes place. That doesn't make you feel any better, I, I understand that. Uh, but I think, um, the applicant has come a long ways. Uh, what you originally, what the applicant originally had proposed and the planning commission heard has changed a lot, and I think that's because neighbors have shown their concerns, and hopefully this board has, um, taken that into consideration.
Other discussion? Thank you, Commissioner Degler. Other discussion? All right, now we'll proceed to the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion prevails. All right, thank you. Moving on to the next item, 7.2, uh, regards the county fair building, and I believe Mr. Hemsey is going to present his.
I can briefly introduce it, Mr. Chair. We, we have members of the fair board in our audience today. I welcome them. Uh, I'll have, uh, the president come up, Mr. Jim Klein. A couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, they came in front of you in a work session with, uh, more conceptual plans for a, a new fair building in your packet. There's more detailed plans and updated numbers. There's also in your packet a recommended funding amount from the county side of $250,000. But I'll have Mr. Klein review the documents in your packet.
Welcome, Jim. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, sir.
Thank you for allowing us to come here tonight, Chair Mucinick, and fellow commissioners and county administrators. Anyhow, uh, we had met with you, uh, about six weeks ago, I guess, or whatever it was, about a new proposed building site that we are proposing for the Carver County Fairgrounds. And at that time, we have come up, uh, with a building, since that, and some quotes and stuff like that for a building. Uh, we had sent you a list of, uh, of what the building would look like and stuff like that. It'll benefit the county in many ways, we feel, as far as 4-H offices, uh, meeting room, and also, uh, for our sheriff's department during the Carver County Fair, and also scout meetings. But anyhow, at this time, we had a few little updates on our, our building since we presented you the, the first packet. Uh, we had, had a little bit electrical work, so we're right on at 435,000 total for the building. Uh, we have a proposal here, a quote from a local, uh, paving company of about a little over 35,000, and then to take the property down to two buildings that we want to take away, the old chamber building and the sheriff's building, about $20,000. So we're right at $500,000, uh, right here for the amount of money right now that we're going to need here to put this new building up. And again, uh, we're looking for the support for half of the building, and like I said, it would benefit our Carver County area in a huge way.
And Jim, that'll include, uh, where the, the county's presence there at the county fair of the year also.
Correct, correct. And, and, and we're planning to, we have a meeting room in there to local, to hold local 4-H club meetings and scout meetings in that part that would be, uh...
Which is great demand in that part of the county.
Right, right.
Okay, board members, questions for Mr. Klein?
No questions. I guess I'd have a motion if you're ready. I think we...
I am ready, Mr. Uh...
We discussed this thoroughly in the work session that Mr. Klein brought up, and I think, uh...
That's correct, yeah.
Has got most of our questions answered, uh, that day. This will be quite an improvement to the fairgrounds, and it will be, uh, improvement. Mr. Klein didn't, didn't mention that the soccer team from the Waconia schools and a variety of folks use those fairgrounds because it's a pretty good chunk of land in the heart of the city of Waconia, and it gets a lot of use by a lot of folks, and the fair board is more than congenial in allowing many groups to benefit from that property being there. So with that said, Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve $250,000 grant allocation to the fair board to assist with the new county fair building, and I would also move to roll over $330,000 remaining in the 2019 Commissioner Contingency Fund and move that to 2020 to be allocated at a later date.
All right, we have two motions before us. Is there a second?
I would second.
Second by Commissioner Lynch. Is there a discussion on the motions? Commissioner Degler?
Mr. Chairman, uh, two different questions, one for, uh, Jim here. How many bids did you get?
Uh, we have three quotes so far.
Okay, that's what I thought. It's not a conflict if I have a ram building already? I hope not. Anyway, my other question goes to, uh, Mr. Freshman. Part of the motion was to roll over 300,000 from the contingency fund. That makes it sound like we have a contingency fund on a regular basis that's way over that. Uh, can you explain why we have that much money in our contingency fund?
Sheriff, Commissioner Degler and...
I know the answer, but I mean...
Yeah. Um, if, if you recall back in, uh, at the end of 2018, when we were putting together the 2019 budget, um, staff came up with a proposal to change our, um, our OPEB liability, other pension, um, liability, and we went from a, um, I'm trying to think of the word, from a non, uh, we, we changed how it was set up, le, the legal process, um, so, which allowed us to increase our interest rate, um, lower our discount rate, um, and lower the amount, um, that we had to put aside for our long-term liability. That created, and it was late in the budget process, um, a, a $500,000 shift, and at that time, the board decided, let's, um, set that aside in the commissioner contingency for 2019. Um, so that's what created the 600,000 that's there today that you're now going to recommend for the, for the building, as well as rolling over the remainder. Um, then, a, as we put together 2020 budget, which we'll, um, recommend adopting here shortly, we, we reduced that back down again and use that as part of balancing our 2020. So the whole effect is, uh, we had 100,000 in 218, we had 600,000 in, in 219, and then we go back to 100,000 in 2020. So it was a one-year blip related to a number of, uh, kind of big things that were going on. Um, so it's there one time, it won't be there in, in 2020.
I want to thank you and apologize for putting you on the spot real quick, like, but I want to thank you for that explanation because our contingency fund is usually not as large as it is.
That's correct, sir. Thank you.
All right, other discussion? Commissioner Lynch?
Uh, only the, I believe this building has been needed for a while. I think the fair board, it's been touched on with the meetings. Uh, it's be, it will be, it'll be used, but also for education. If you think about the fairgrounds, it's usually where we have one of our plow trucks. And I get a lot of comments about that. The plow truck is there, and people see, man, I, I can't believe the size of that. I, I should need to have more respect for it. So use it for education, too. Usually, there's a police car there, and I asked Commissioner Workman if he wanted to get in the backseat, and he already assured we, he'd been there many times, so.
I'm surprised he's not in there, but...
I've heard the word "freeze" a lot, too.
He thought it was a free ride.
Right before the ride.
All right, that's, uh, I guess all the comments necessary. Unless there's more further discussion, if not, we'll move to the vote. Uh, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, or motions, I should say.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Those motions prevail in our pass. Thank you, Mr. Klein, for all your good work. Everything you guys do out there is just fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll be happy to give you a tour when it's completed.
You bet.
Forward to that.
All right, uh, the chair's going to use a discretion to recess us for five minutes to take care of any, uh, individual personal problems you may have at this time, so. We do have a quorum, Carrie, let's see. We'll, we'll reconvene, and, uh, we'll move on to item number eight. Under our mission statement of culture, provide organizational culture fostering accountability to achieve goal and sustain trust slash confidence in county government. Item 8.1 is a resolution for consideration setting the 2020 county attorney and county sheriff compensation.
...qualifications and performance. In addition, court rulings indicate that commissioners are responsible to ensure the salaries are in line with similarly situated counties in the state. County Attorney Mark Metz's 2019 salary is set at 176,891, and County Sheriff Jason Camerud's 2019 salary is set at 150,000. Market data has been provided for current year 2019 data. It is anticipated that the metro counties cited for comparison purposes will also be increasing salaries for 2020. Carver County's approach with regard to compensation, pay for performance program, has been to provide competitive pay and reward top talent and employee initiative and accomplishments. The county's settled collective bargaining agreements establish a 2020 pay for performance and general adjustment increase. Based on performance in recent years, the greatest number of county employees, greatest percentage of county employees, receive an overall rating of exceeds expectations. Employee receiving an overall rating of exceeds expectations and the general adjustment based on negotiated patterns would receive a total increase of four and one-half percent. Individuals with outstanding performance would receive five and one-half percent. For employees who have not yet reached the target rate of the salary range associated with their classification, the performance-based increase percentage is calculated on the target rate of the assigned salary range. When setting the 2020 salary for the county attorney, the board may wish to consider following an approach similar to countywide employee salary adjustments. For example, the board could increase the county attorney's salary by an amount just above the exceeds expectations percentage at approximately 4.7% calculated on the metro county 2019 average salary amount. Following this, this approach, an increase of 8,500 would be applied to the current annual salary, resulting in a 2020 annual salary of 185,391 for County Attorney Metz. Recommended salary increase outlined would recognize the high level of performance County Attorney Metz has demonstrated in his role, and it maintains a competitive salary in relation to those provided by comparable counties for this leadership position. Sheriff Camerud's initial year salary was set somewhat lower than the salaries of his peers in comparable metro counties. Sheriff Camerud has demonstrated an effective transition into the role of sheriff and has shown a high level, level of performance while fulfilling the critical responsibilities of this position. At this time, taking demonstrated performance into account, the board may wish to consider an approach that will appropriately advance Sheriff Camerud's salary toward the metro average. The sheriff's salary of 150,000 is approximately 13,300 below the average metro sheriff's salary, based on the current 2019 figures. The board could consider providing an annual increase of 8,500 for 2020, matching that recommended for the county attorney. This reflects a slightly higher percentage increase of approximately 5.2% calculated on the metro sheriff average salary, and reflects consideration of relevant factors for this position. The resulting 2020 salary would be 158,500. So the action requested of the board at this time is to adopt a resolution defining the 2020 compensation for the county sheriff and the county attorney, and providing both with the same cafeteria benefits as other county employees.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, this is motion by Commissioner Workman, second by, duly by Commissioner Lynch. Is there any discussion regarding the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree that both of these gentlemen greatly exceed our expectations, and, uh, it should be compensated along with the metro.
Well said. Um, you know, for a guy that flunked the LSAT, I still, I have to say, man, you guys are doing a great job. We appreciate everything you do, so, thank you very much. Anybody else? I think we're in agreement, right? Commissioner Lynch?
We're very much in agreement, though. I think that, um, the only issue I have is Mr. Metz being a Packer fan, but other than that, he does a absolutely wonderful job.
I did check, there's no, there's no way on the statute that we can somehow reduce his salary because of that.
Wouldn't do it under statute.
Although, we could look into that, I think. So, all right, so, uh, if there's no further discussion, we'll move on to the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion prevails. All right, thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. Metz. Appreciate your good work. Carrie, you've got the next item, 8.2, resolution setting the 2020 county commissioners' compensation.
All right, so the next item for consideration is a resolution setting the compensation, including salary and benefits for county commissioners for 2020. There are several factors that should be considered in setting commissioner salaries, including market rates and internal organizational salary history and patterns. Metro area data reflects an average commissioner salary of 80,687. This is, again, based on the current 2019 data, and it is anticipated that other metro counties will also be increasing salaries for 2020. In comparison, Carver County Commissioners' current annual salary is set at 68,664. Typical county employee increases in 2020 are anticipated to range from four and one-half to five and one-half percent. As discussed in the prior request, this includes both general adjustment and performance-based pay. When setting the commissioners' salaries for 2020, the board may wish to consider following an approach similar to countywide employee salary adjustments. For example, the board could consider increasing commissioner salaries by approximately four and one-half percent, calculated based on the metro 2019 average salary amount. Following this approach, an increase of approximately 3,630 would move the Carver County Commissioner's salary toward the average metro figure. The resulting Carver County Commissioner 2020 annual salary would be 72,294. Also included in the resolution establishing commissioner annual salaries for 2020 are provisions setting cafeteria benefits at the same rate as other employees, and expense allowances of $715 for the chair, $640 for the vice chair, and $650, $15 for the other So the action requested at this time is to adopt a resolution setting the county commissioner annual salaries and monthly expense allowances for 2020, and also providing benefits consistent with other county employees.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions for Carrie?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Ishi. Is there a second?
Second.
Duly seconded by Commissioner Degler. Further discussion? All right, now we'll proceed to the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That motion prevails. Thank you, Carrie, very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number nine, under our mission plan of finances, strategic plan of finances, improve the county's fi, financial health and economic profile, item number 9.1, 2020 property tax levy and budget. Mr. Hemsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. We're going to go old school with the overhead. Always have a backup plan. Our PC is not projecting tonight. So we're here to talk about the 2020 property tax levy. I'd like you to adopt that as a separate item. We will, uh, update you on the financial plan. We'll also a, ask you to adopt that document. As you know, this is a long process, started way back in the spring... As you know, this is a long process, started way back in the spring, with a number of meetings with you and others, and I appreciate your direction and guidance through the whole process. Let me also make sure I thank Dave Frishman, our finance director, and Mary Kay, his assistant. They really do a lot of the work behind the scenes to make this budget a great product. So I would like to provide the overall executive summary. Dave will do the financial details, and then we'll ask you to adopt, first of all, the budget, and then later the financial plan. So here's the, here's the budget. Pretty hard to put down in a few words. I think that's going to come through. Or my eyes are getting really bad.
Oh, it's blurry. There you go.
It was my hand that got in the way. Hard to describe in a few bullet points, the budget, but I've done my best here. Obviously, our goal here is to provide high-quality, efficient public services, and that really cannot be done, I don't believe, without some of the great fiscal strategies that we have. I think the real proof of the strong fiscal strategies, number one, is the AAA bond rating that we've had for over a decade now. In terms of the big chunk of the budget, the biggest slice of the pie, it's really about our personnel. We are in the service business. That's what we do, and that takes people, our employees. And if you look at, there are a number of ways to look at that in terms of the budget, but we're talking about the levy tonight. Roughly three-quarters of that levy is our personnel. So that really, I think, strikes home in terms of the challenge that, and opportunities that we face in our budget with putting things together. We also saw a one-time funding source reduction in this budget cycle. That's a little bit different than what we're usually experiencing or have experienced over the past few years, and Dave will dive into that in a little bit more detail. And then, obviously, we're talking about the levy impact. We're recommending a 4.99% levy impact, a 3.34% tax impact. I would say that's right in the average middle of what's going on around the state. We don't have all those numbers listed. You might have caught some articles and AMC information and other information coming through, so roughly in the average of what's going on around the state. So how are your tax dollars spent? If you look at this chart, a number of different ways to look at those dollars, but certainly we want to talk about the services and who's providing those services. You can see that, here's an allocation of the average value home, and the average value home, by the way, is up to $360,000 in Carver County. That average value home would pay, in county taxes, $104 a month. That equates to roughly $1,248 a year, and this is how that those dollars would be divided up on an annual basis. So it gives a good perspective of the functional areas where those dollars are spent. To give some better visuals, one of our more popular services, and I think we do a great job, or perhaps as great as any county, certainly in Minnesota and well beyond, our libraries are very highly functional. We're proud to have partnerships with the cities that leverage additional dollars. Of course, we provide the staff, and they provide the bricks and mortar. But on our end of the equation, for around $7 a month, those various libraries are serving our citizens. Keep things straight here. I'm not used to doing it this way. Another very evident service for our citizens, certainly, especially in the winter, is that of our Public Works Department, the Snowplow Services. If you look at just the maintenance piece of their puzzle, around $7 a month, taxation goes towards keeping the roads safe and clean and maintained. Parks and Trails, another very popular service, really looks like a value, and obviously there's always more to the story. In this particular case, there's outside external funding coming from the Metropolitan Council and other funding sources. But in terms of our investment, around $1.75 a month for our great parks that we have here in Carver County, and we're certainly doing a good job making them even better, and Wacony, I think, is the shining example where we're putting significant more dollars into upgrades on not only the mainland, but in Wacony Island. Very critical service is dispatch down in the, underneath the sheriff's office. If you look at the cost of the, really, again, this is about their personnel, and obviously they have equipment needs, but for around $4 a month, we are providing those 911 services across the county. So I'm going to hand it over to Dave. We'll see how good he is at juggling these slides, and he'll provide a little more detail, then we'll look for your adoption of the budget.
Thank you, Dave. Good afternoon, Chair and Board members.
Well, David, welcome.
As Dave mentioned, I'll cover a little more of the numbers and provide an overall summary. You guys know this is one of my favorite slides. It shows our, how we put together the budget last four years, and you can see the county tax levy increase at 2.8 million. That's our recommended increase, and it's to cover, as you can see, the main driver is that 2.9 million right below it of salaries and benefits projection. Then I have a couple other line items that I'll provide more detail in, just try and match up the colors with, as I go deeper into the, into the presentation. But you can see the countywide levy adjustments, that's always a big factor. Some years, it's bigger than others. Our negative trends in our divisions, same thing. They kind of, each year, we just kind of see what's in front of us, and how are we going to address it? And typically, we go back to the divisions and make some adjustments, usually on the revenue side. That helps balance the budget. And then always a key, a key number for us is our, at the bottom there, the levy-funded FTEs, how much property tax levy is going to additional FTEs, and you can see that's a number that we've gone up and down with over the last couple of years. But overall, that, there's where the money's coming from, and then where the money's going for the 2020 budget.
You need to flip it over, Dave? Unless I've already.
I think that was yours. Thanks.
Just trying to help.
So on this slide has the countywide levy adjustment, just around $500,000 that I mentioned before, and then it has, provides a little more detail. The key number on the top is the zero, really, on this slide, because in the past, that vacancy savings has been something that we've used to balance our budget over the last several years, but it's not there this year, and that really had some pretty dramatic impacts, both in terms of putting the budget together for 2020, as well as what was left over for one-time funding, which is where we've done it in the past. So we'll see that slide in a second here, but we did have some other impacts on a countywide basis, and we did reduce the commissioner contingency. As I mentioned, that was the $500,000 that we went up, and then we went back down, that we talked about at the Fair Board proposal. It rounded off to 49 because of some other adjustments that we made during the year with staffing, but roughly $500,000 of that commissioner contingency. That'll bring us back down to $100,000. We did get, legislature did approve $438,000 in additional CPA that we used to help balance the budget, and then you can see some other individual line items, typical things that are in there, and that netted out to the $500,000 in levy adjustments. Oh, and this slide shows that vacancy savings that I mentioned before, and you can see the red that you see back in 2011, the large difference between the red and the gold would be our vacancy savings, difference in what we budgeted would be in the red, and the gold was the actual. And you can see over time, that gold going up, that would represent increases in our budget for vacancy savings that allowed us to balance our budget. But in 2018, the circle there shows that the gold and the yellow, or the yellow and the red are really close for 2018, which meant there wasn't any more vacancy savings that we could use to help balance our budget. You can see we've leveled that off, the gold, so we're no longer projecting increases in that in terms of our budget. So that was a, it was a, it was a nice thing that we had for a few years that were able to help us balance our budget, but as I mentioned, it wasn't there for 2019. I mean, excuse me, in 2018, for 2020. In terms of the commissioner contingency, this graphically shows the, what I tried to answer Commissioner Degler's question earlier, that we did have that $600,000 in terms of one-time budget for 2019, and here's the changes that I was mentioning in terms of the staffing and then the park fees. That generated the $489,000 that was left in order to get us back down to $100,000. So that, that's been the commission contingent we've had for a number of years, and that's what we recommend for 2020. Well, this slide shows our division levy adjustments, both the negative trends that I mentioned, that up around $800,000 and across the different divisions. Those would be just increased costs related to, it could be IT, software costs, Microsoft licensing fees, additional contracts that are following trends that we need to set aside additional money for. Then they're offset in the middle there with revenue increases, where we're charging additional fees, or we're getting state, federal money back in different areas. So those two net out to about $300,000 increase overall in terms of our levy adjustments, and it's, then it's broken up by each individual division. As I mentioned, staffing is always a key piece of the puzzle for us. This slide represents the FTEs that are requested by the division directors on the left, so just around 11, that were requested, and the administration's recommended just under five, with the majority of that five being funded by other sources, the $300,000, and then you can see the tax levy of $120,000. So that, that breaks out, and it also shows what, in terms of what's been recommended. You can see the individual requests that are in bold at the line. Those would be the ones that are approved as part of this recommendation, and then the red would be the ones that are being eliminated. And to show, graphically, to show our overall, just to highlight the employees, the number of employees we have, this graph we've shown for per 1,000 citizens, and you can see it's been just over seven back in 2008, and then it went down around six as economic downturn. We're actually reducing our workforce. Now we're back, going back up again, and we've circled that, the men choices and child protection. So as we, even as we're adding FTEs, it wasn't necessarily impacting the levy, because we were getting outside funding from either the feds or the state, which allowed us to get back up to just, just over, just right around seven, and now you can see we've kind of flatlined that over these last couple of years. That trend is expected to continue with the 2020 budget. And shifting gears and focus on the overall tax base, they had a strong increase. We're at $15.5 billion is the overall tax increase, with just over 8% increase from 2018 to 2020. A portion of the new construction, so new property, new tax base that's come into the county in 2018 that's available for 2020, that we can increase our levy by 1.2 million just from the new, new, new construction. That's a key factor, as Dave mentioned, the 4.9 increase in the levy compared to the 3.3% increase in the tax impact, that's the driving factor. That's the main thing that allows us to induce, increase our levy without passing that increase on to all the taxpayers, is the new taxpayers that are coming in to our tax base. As Dave mentioned as well, the average value increase on that, average value home of $360,000 to 7%, real strong, and in commercials as well, 8%, and then the ag was pretty much flatlined from 2019 to 2020. And then a little more detail on that 2.8 million that's recommended in terms of our increase in the levy for 2020. That tax impact on that would be about $40 in the average value at home, as we mentioned, the 3.34% tax impact, and then just comparing that to 2019, where it was actually a slightly lower taxing, increase in terms of the levy dollars. The levy increase was slightly smaller, but then the tax impact was actually lower, and it will be lower in 2020 than it was in 2019. And then add a little historical perspective. This is the tax impact in the average value at home going back to 2011, and you can see the gold is what our consumer price index kind of inflation has done over time. You can see that pattern, and then the red is actually a tax burden on that average value at home going back. So back in 2011, it was flat. We're actually able to reduce it. In 2013, it was flat. Now it's starting to rise up again, as the impacts that we're having on our budget, we're not able to offset in any other way, partly because of the vacancy savings we mentioned, partly because of the, the increased costs are just, you know, so large that we're not able to, to offset them with any revenue increases or anything else. So it's been going on, on the tax burden, but it has been tracking pretty much, you know, with the, with inflation. Then as Dave mentioned, you know, statewide, we're pretty much in the middle there. This is, this is showing some of the metro areas, right at 4.99% Carver. You can see a lot of fours in there, and then towards the bottom, you know, five and six. So we're, we're in the mix there in terms of the, just in terms of the tax levy increase for 2020. And just to highlight some of the capital projects, attachment C, we have a road, and both, all three of these attachments are in the board packet, but in terms of the capital improvement plans, the big one is the road and bridge, over $40 million in new construction, road and bridge projects in 2020. Only, and only of that amount, 2.2 million is county tax levy, and that just goes for road preservation. So all of the additional money is all coming from fed, federal sources, state, metro, met council, all the new construction. So the county levy dollars are just going, as has been directed by the board, is just going for road preservation. So somebody else is building it, and then we're maintaining it. Parks and trails, buildings, and others, those are all projects that we're going to do, but as shown on the slide, there are no tax, no county tax levy are going to those projects. Attachment D lists out our equipment that we're recommending being replaced for 2020, and that's part of a five-year plan that we have to maintain and replace the, all of the equipment that we have that moves or that we use in the buildings or out in Public Works, or the sheriff's squad cars. There is a $100,000 increase in that to offset the additional costs related to cost increases and, and as our fleet grows. So that's something the board has directed and supported over the years. Attachment E shows our one-time projects, and there are the funding sources there. This is, this is a little bit less than we've done in the past. As Dave mentioned, it's the, we're kind of cut back here because we didn't have the vacancy savings that, or any other sources, really, that have helped us out there. But there's still a fair amount of projects in there, $650,000 for bridge replacements, and in the packet identifies some various other projects related to roofs and retaining wall and other various vehicles. And just to remind the board about the 2020 construction projects, the 40 million, 41 million that I mentioned on the previous slide, these are just the various types of projects and where they are spread out through the county. And just a quick update on our year-end savings account. So the, and the beginning balance in 2019 was $3 million. We still have, we still have reserved $700,000 for a mark-to-market investment. As the board recalls, it was three, four years ago now, interest rates can really have an impact at late in the year on our investment income, and we have changed our policy, so we're mitigating that, so we don't think we have as much exposure as we have in the past, but we still have some exposure. So we take that reserve that we have, the $3 million, and we set aside $700,000 just on paper to make sure we have that in case the, the interest rates do, would spike up at the end of the year. And then we also are taking out this year, taking $110,000 for one-time projects to supplement the, the list of projects that I just summarized, and that still leaves us with 2.2 million, which has been about where we've been. We've been in the $2 million to $2.5, you know, bumped up a little in 2018, but now we're bringing it back down to pretty much where it is, just on paper, remember, because we still have that $700,000 still there. We're just saying we don't have that available, because we're reserving it for mark-to-market adjustment related to interest rates. That was the overall budget in terms of the operating budget as well as the capital, and then taking a peek out a little further, we also have a long-term financial plan that we'd ask the board to adopt, and that just provides a overall summary where we're setting aside, and these aren't, these aren't approved projects. This is just a planning document, a planning tool that allows us to start looking into the future. And as you're well aware, the, in terms of the funding for the roads and bridges, that's been the transportation sales tax, the wheelage tax, so at the. So at our last workshop, Lyndon presented how that increased money has now been allocated towards the various projects, two twelve and the different big road and bridge projects that are out there. We've also the building miscellaneous, our capital improvement plan. The big one there is that master space plan study. And the board is well aware, our first phase of that is the Health and Human Services, which is our largest division as well as our fastest-growing division. By moving that off campus, giving them their own building, it's going to allow a real domino effect for everybody else who will be able to move into that space. But we need to get that, the big elephant in a different spot. And also remind that Chaska Library is a project that's, excuse me, Rod. I forgot he was in the room, but I could tell by your reaction that he was still here. The Chaska Library, still an unknown project, just keep that in mind as the commissioner, or the administrator mentioned, the cities build them and then we staff them and we supply the books and the shelves. So there is a one-time cost related to that. Parks and Trails, the Coney Island, just a reminder that we have a million dollars funded for the Coney Island cleanup. We have a three million Phase One infrastructure at the regional park that's been funded, fifty percent with state legislative dollars and fifty percent with county dollars. But what's unfunded is Phase Two, as well as the Waconia Events Center. So just a reminder about those two big projects that we're working on. And in terms of operations, you're looking out, the FTEs, we mentioned a couple of times in this presentation, that is really the push point because as the county grows and services get more complex and the requests and the demand grows, we need to offset that with additional FTEs. And that's always a tough thing. We try and minimize that by investments in technology, cooperation and our look, and continuous improvement and trying to do things better and cheaper and faster. But that's always a tough one. And there's also going to be, if that library goes in Chaska, there'll be, expect to be additional FTEs for that as well. Just so keep that in mind. Health insurance, we've done, we've done a really good job here at the county maintaining that. And it's still increasing, but it's not increasing quite as fast as some other organizations. Big key to that is a five-year rate cap that we've gotten. We've now actually had this, our second round of five-year rate caps. So last ten years, we've had a really good rate caps. But just to remind the board that the next year, two thousand twenty one will be our fifth year. So two thousand twenty-two will be going back out to the market and seeing where we go. Last two times we've gone out, we've had really good news, but the third time, it'll be fifteen years ago, it was not good news when we went out. So just to keep that in mind that that's something that we're constantly thinking about and constantly trying to do a better job of wellness programs and trying to keep our employees healthy to both make, help us be more productive as well as minimize our health insurance costs. And since the road and bridge is such a big part of our future budgets and our long-term financial plan, there is a slide just showing over the next five years where the, Lyndon is planning on spending road and bridge dollars and the various types in areas. And just a reminder, as the county administrator mentioned, this is a long process. Starts back in May when we had our strategic planning board workshop. And we talked about the budget strategy. There's been various board actions along the way. And then, which brings us to today's meeting where we're asking the board to to adopt the resolutions that are in your packet, the adopted two thousand twenty budget and levy with those dollars. And then also a second motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one Long-Term Financial Plan Resolution.
Questions for Mr. Fishman. To you, none commissioners, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the twenty twenty budget and levy resolutions, the twenty twenty county tax levy of fifty-nine million seventy-three thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars, the twenty twenty WMO tax levy of eight hundred and two thousand eight hundred and two dollars, and the twenty twenty total budget, including the WMO, of one hundred and forty-seven million eight hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Okay, there is a motion before you combine several of those and that's all right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Degler, discussion on the motion. Are you none all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, that motion prevails. So we've got a budget for twenty twenty, it looks like. Next item is nine point two, Long-Term Financial Plan. We already did that, right?
Yeah, we did that, yep. Cover that.
That's what I thought. Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, I would move.
There you go.
We approve the two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one Long-Term Financial Plan Resolution.
All right, there's a motion by Commissioner Degler, is a second. Second by Commissioner Workman, any further discussion on that motion? Are you none all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, that motion prevails.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion in recess as the county board and convene as the Carver County Regional Rail Authority.
Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Degler, further discussion. Are you none all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, that motion prevails. We are now meeting as the Carver County Regional Rail Authority. Is that Mr. Robson?
I'd call on the administrator.
I believe the administrator might be filling in. Who's going to do it? Mr. Fishman?
I can give you a motion without any discussion.
It's pretty straightforward.
I know it is.
I bet you you could do this in two sentences.
Let me try. Is that one?
Yes.
We've got a little more left. Lyndon was not able, he actually went to an arboretum meetings, arboretum meeting. He asked me to present this on behalf of the Regional Rail Authority. And the recommendation is in your packet along with the resolution to adopt the two thousand twenty levy as well as budget for the Carver County Regional Rail Authority.
Thank you, is there a motion?
I'd make the motion.
Motion, Commissioner Lynch, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ishi, further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, if I could, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollar budget that increased four point nine because of the increased stewardship costs related to acquisition of the River Bluffs Regional Trail. So it'd be a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
That's an eight thousand dollar increase, is that correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Are you none all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, that motion prevails.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adjourn as the Carver County Regional Rail and reconvene as the Carver County Board.
Motion by Commissioner Degler, second by Commissioner Lynch, any further discussion on the motion? Are you none all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, that motion prevails. The next item on our agenda, number ten, is in our strategic plan as connections develop strong public partnerships, connect peoples to services. Item ten point one is the year in review.
Do you have the slides, Mr. Chair?
I, he took them away from me.
Could we take a brief recess and track them down?
Yeah, do you think they're going to show up on that?
Um, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
All right, I think that was the concern.
Yeah.
All right, we have a quick recess.
We were going to adjourn here because we didn't want to list you.
You know. Commissioner, you can make any motion like. Don't worry about my feelings.
You can adjourn?
Put that in a motion, Ishi.
I don't know where the chair is, we could take a motion, I suppose, and adjourn regularly.
Yep, you're the acting chair.
Exactly. Go for it.
I'm ready to begin, yes.
Make a call like that for one point four, I would do it.
Okay.
And to ask them to participate.
Let's continue at our meeting.
I'm honored to present this past year's highlights for the county. The county continues to work with various partners on Highway two twelve expansion to four lanes throughout the county. The county continues to advocate for state funding, hosting a senate bonding tour event at Bungards Creamery this fall. The Highway two twelve slash forty-four interchange project was held by the city of Chaska, included a reconstruction and expansion of Highway forty-four between the intersections of sixty-one and Highway eleven. The project added on and off ramps to connect Highway two twelve and Highway forty-four. The project also added a pedestrian bridge. The Flying Cloud Drive Reconstruction Project from Highway one oh one roundabout to Carlson Road reopened in November. The project added a new pedestrian trail to connect trail facilities between Highway one oh one and Carlson Road. Looking forward to this coming spring, we see the continuation of our Highway forty-one and eighteen project with the cities of Chaska and Chan Hassen and the beginning of construction of Highway one oh one project, Bluff area in the city of Chan Hassen. Wow, I think we should have been one more. There we go. Moving to parks, work on Lake Waconia Regional Park project started in late summer. Work includes site grading, construction of water and sewer utilities, roads, parking lots, and a watercraft access in conjunction with the DNR. Great progress has been made on Coney Island. Crews have worked to clear areas, grade trails and construct picnic areas. The work will resume in the spring to continue with site cleanup and trail construction. Timing for the open of the island for public use is planned for the summer of two thousand twenty, but depending on completion of additional work to mitigate hazardous conditions. Finally, the board voted to eliminate park entrance fees in August, big one. And that's, access took effect on December first. We're proud to open our wonderful parks to everyone and it removes any financial barriers for access and promotes health and wellness throughout the county and the region. Goldfish infestation. While doing routine monitoring this spring, Carver County Water Management Staff discovered thousands of goldfish in an inlet in the Big Woods Lake in Chaska. The story appeared on nearly every TV station in the metro area as well as all the local newspapers. This gave our water management organization staff a chance to educate the public about how to deal with unwanted pets like fish so they don't harm the environment. Carver County CDA purchased and is renovating currently four housing units in downtown Chaska to serve as veterans' transitional housing. This project supports veterans who are experiencing homelessness. This is part of an effort to end homelessness for veterans all over Minnesota. For Carver County, to be able to offer this resource to our veterans is outstanding. The project has received a donation from the Lions Club of Chaska in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars with other grants and funding being secured by the excellent staff at the county CDA. And Commissioner Lynch, I understand there was a rather large check from the Waconia Lions that we just received last week, which might not be in these comments. So be sure to thank our Lions there for that. Carver County Veterans Assistance Program was launched this year. This leverages the philanthropy of multiple community organizations and already existing veterans or support services to help veterans and their families who have emergency needs. This isn't a handout, but instead helps those with immediate needs and then ensures that they have long-term support through the benefits they already earned. Everyone involved is excited to combine the already ongoing efforts and realize their energy through this coordinated program. We're pleased by the end of this year that the county will be able to return passport services to Chaska by offering them here at the government center without adding any FTEs, I may add. This gives us two locations in the county, Chaska and Chan Hassen, where any U.S. resident can secure a passport. Our staff also implemented an online appointment system for driver's licenses, passport, motor vehicle services, shortening the wait times at those locations. Using our legislative fee increase, we hired greeters at the Chan Hassen and Chaska licensed locations. In land management, the county worked with the city of Watertown on a FEMA letter of map revision. It was approved revising the flood plan and the floodway along Maples Creek. The end resulted, result means homeowners in Rosewood Estates no longer have to carry the expensive flood insurance. In September, we issued a conditional use permit for the Patterson Sand Company. It plans to develop and operate a rail-based transloading facility to import aggregate materials in Benton Township east of the city of Norwood Young America. The site allows Patterson Sand to ship in by rail aggregate material from its Iowa mine. The aggregate fills a need for material in the west and southwest metro. Carver County Workforce Center celebrated its rebranding as an official career force site this year. The change is part of a major transition for Minnesota's entire workforce, bringing multiple partners under a single unified career force brand. Unifying all elements of Minnesota's workforce system will enhance customer service and improve outcomes for career seekers, employers, communities throughout Minnesota. In addition, the Income Support Department collected nearly six point five million dollars in child support to help children and families. It also processed seven thousand healthcare applications to ensure that residents have healthcare. Our public health team had another busy and productive year. They completed the most expansive community health assessment in Carver County history and are in the process of complementing our community health improvement plan. That's completing our community health improvement plan. Public health collaboration on a number of projects this past year with the Parks Department. Public health supported the initiative to eliminate park entrance fees. They also piloted well, wayfaring signs on the city of Chaska Trail System and the goal of increasing trail usage that leads to healthier habits. They implemented free membership to the Minnesota Landscape Arboretum for county residents who live on little income. Finally, the mom and baby cafe partnership with Ridgeview Medical and Memory Cafe with the Chan Hassen Library were also big successes for public health in this past year. In two thousand nineteen, the Carver County Attorney's Office sued opiate manufacturers and distributors for allegedly using fraudulent marketing tactics to flood communities, including our Carver County, with addictive and dangerous opiate drugs in the name of outrageous profits. The lawsuit is part of a larger group of plaintiffs from across the state and county who have sued the big pharmaceutical companies. The goal is to hold big pharmaceutical companies accountable for their deception and the harm that they have caused. Carver County is not immune to the drug overdose epidemic, having had twenty drug-related deaths from two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen. Carver County Attorney Mark Metz announced that the county was awarded a five hundred thousand dollar federal grant to start a drug treatment court in the county, beginning in two thousand twenty. In two thousand eighteen, eight drug overdose deaths occurred in Carver County, up from two in two thousand seventeen. The Carver County Attorney's Office prosecuted one hundred and fourteen gross misdemeanors and felony drug cases in two thousand eighteen. Eligible participants will be substance abuse offenders in Carver County who are nonviolent and the rate at, and rate at high risk and high need on validated risk assessment tools. Carver County currently has a successful veterans treatment court that has been operational since two thousand fourteen and follows similar protocols. The drug court will commence on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty. The grant funding will cover a forty-eight month period. Sheriff Jason Cameroud wanted to share a number of collaborations between his department and others in the county that he feels makes a positive impact on the safety and quality of service the sheriff's office delivers to its residents. First, he added a co-responder crisis therapist that reports to HHS but works out of the sheriff's office. Sheriff Cameroud also brought in crisis call takers co-located in the nine eleven center. We will all know that mental health issues are being dealt with in the field much more by our sheriff deputies, and they now are equipped with resources to support them in that endeavor. Some of the sheriff's office radio tower equipment had to be temporarily moved to paint the water tower where it was located. Sheriff Cameroud worked with our Carver Link Fiber Optic Network to upgrade the technology used by the sheriff's office and leverage the county's current fiber technology to eliminate some of the radio components. Environmental Services partnered with the University of Minnesota Extension to host two agricultural plastic collection events. They collected twenty-seven thousand pounds of plastic destined to be burned or landfill, but instead it was recycled. We worked with the PGA of America to divert more than nine tons of waste from landfills during two thousand nineteen KM, KPMG Women's PGA Championship at Hazelton. This included more than five tons of edible food that was recovered and distributed to local families in need, providing nearly nine thousand meals. Our libraries continue to be one of the most utilized and valuable assets to our communities across the county. This year, we earned national recognition for their STEM Storytime Program as it was named the recipient of the two thousand nineteen NACO Achievement Award in the Libraries category. The program served around eight hundred children during the summer of two thousand eighteen and has libraries across the nation asking our staff how they could replicate this program in their libraries. Our Memory Makers Kit also received television coverage this year. It's another great example of collaboration across the county between the board, public health, and the library to support those residents helping with family members with Alzheimer's or dementia. These kits help spur memories and spark conversation as a testament to the popularity of libraries. It surpassed the one million mark in materials checked out this year. In early twenty twenty, the county will open a new mental health and wellness facility. We are excited about adding this facility to support those going through a mental health crisis. Getting those in need and the help they require in a proper setting can increase safety and stability for that person, their family, and their community. This service was previously not offered in the county and completes a gap in our continuum of care. Clients seek care voluntarily in this transitional facility, offering them a far better alternative to the emergency room, which previously was their only option. Construction and expansion will increase the facility from five-bed unit to twelve beds. Carver County ranked first in the happiest county in the United States for the second consecutive year. The rankings are based on a two thousand nineteen World Happiness Report. The county placed first in the same rankings in two thousand eighteen. This marks the fifth consecutive year Carver County has ranked in the top five. This, the website cited the county's high physical activity rate, its high marriage rate, and its low divorce rate. County posted a low unemployment weight, rate as well. The county also recognized by U.S. News as the eighth healthiest county in the country. Carver County was the lone Minnesota county recognized in the top ten. I'd like to, uh, thanks again to everyone in the county, from the residents, uh, finalizing or finishing up here, to the community partners, to the county, city leaders, for making Carver County a great place to work, play, and live for a lifetime. And I'd like to thank you, my colleagues, for, uh, supporting me in this endeavor this year. I, uh, I feel we accomplished a lot, and I appreciate your friendship and your help in, uh, in our duties, uh, as we see fit with, as being county commissioners here in Carver County. So, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Degler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. No discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We are adjourned.